Okay, thank you. The next is determination of public input. I would suggest that we receive the information from Mr. Stewart and his group have council questions and comments, followed by public comments, objections to that. Okay. That brings us to item number one, eighteen dash zero zero four four zero, Stewart Properties, introductory section regarding the settlement remaining parcels at Community Maritime Park. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stewart.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, and I apologize for having my back, everyone. Somebody did say my hair looked like crap from the back, so trying to fix that very much. But thank you very much, we're excited to be here and talk about what we'd like to walk away with, the desired outcome, and certainly, public input's always welcome. The desired outcome today is just to really hear from the city council members, and of course, then hear from anyone in the community, just to talk about what process you would like. It's not to show buildings, it's not to have plan, because there's not been a market study. And I think one of the things, the first step we'd like to do, we plan on doing, is an intense market study of what will the market bear? I think when you look back at failures, it's why we get so excited about what could be there, that we put stuff there that's not sustainable. You know, a lot of people aren't aware of this, but before we even committed to go spend twenty million dollars to get a minor league baseball team to move into Pensacola, we did a lot of market research on would the community support affiliated minor league baseball team, to what extent. Before we built the South Town neighborhood, we spent probably over a hundred thousand dollars on market research, pre-market researches on would the community support residential downtown? But not only would it support residential downtown, what type of residential downtown? And even though it came out very strong that it would, I still got scared, because, you know, I've never spent fifty-two million dollars on a building. We actually had them come to town and do focus groups, and show people, yeah, you're excited about living downtown, but you understand there's going to be a bar across the street? Do you understand that it's going to be railroad tracks on one side? Do you understand that there's going to be more traffic and noise than you might be used to? And you realize that if you're in a studio apartment, it's going to be five hundred and fifty square feet, have you ever lived in five hundred and fifty square feet? So I think market research is something that we want to put into here. But let's go back a little bit, we've all known about this site and so on. So we'd like to really walk away today, just after this intro, and talk to Jeff and so on, and Marina, and just really hear from you on what process you'd like, how much you'd like to be involved, how much communication you would like on the progress and so on. Andy and I talked a little bit today, because Grover really couldn't be here today, because he's had a commitment in Tampa, he basically met with us last night, so he wants you to know he's totally committed to this process, and apologizes for not being here. So, a little bit about this history of this, and then we'll introduce Jeff and so on. All of you know, if you don't know, read my book. Anyway, Maritime Park has sat there, and it's gone through a lot of unfortunate issues from the Ray Kindros, I thought did a great job, if you go back to Ray Kindros' original work on it, but unfortunately, of master development challenges, a lot of that just didn't happen. The good news is, it's really, I think, created a great, great chance in our community, when people go back and look at what it's done for downtown, our assessed property value just in the last four years has gone up twenty-four point nine percent within the CRA district, and that doesn't include yet the Holiday Inn Express, it doesn't include the new Urban Core Office Building that Card Partington's in, does not include the new South Town apartment development, does not include the improvements we're making on the White Building, does not include all the improvements that Bobby Switzer has made, so it's only going to get better. But we also know a lot of our development's been east of Palafox, and my whole goal, and I know many of your goals, is to go west of Palafox, you know, tried that before with the Y and some other projects, and just didn't happen unfortunately. So what we've got now is we've got these parcels, and we've got these parcels, we've got two of them have been developed, one by Beck Properties and one by us with the Maritime Office Building, both highly successful, by the way, office complexes in full. And when we looked at the other parcels, now, we, what I learned from Asheville, studying cities, is many times the government doesn't have money to buy property, but if the wrong person buys the property, or the wrong use of the property, it can hurt a city for years and years and years. So one of the things we learned from Pat Wayland in Asheville, who's now deceased, is create systems so people can get property, to make sure that as we utilize it, we utilize it, what's best for the citizens, which is our mission, is to make the community better. So we bought the ECOA site, if you know, and we've sat on those nineteen acres, just waiting to see what's the best development, because the last thing you want is the wrong development, that can hurt you for years and years and years. As we've looked at it, and looked at it, and had people come in, one of the questions has always been, what's going to happen around it? You know, gee, if we put this in here, what's going to happen next to us and so on? When Emmett Smith came to town twice now, and I've talked to him, and I'm glad Robert Rente's in, because I know Robert's been very interested in parcels periodically, the question is parking, the parking issue, and the other question is what's going to happen across the street? You know, if I put in a lot of development here, what happens there? So the question came, how can we make this a master development plan, which I believe it should even go beyond just these parcels, it should look at going down Main Street to Palafox, it should look at what's going west, Jewel, I think it should look at what's going north, because it all works together. And now that we have a wonderfully publicly accessible Bruce Beach, how does it work for Bruce Beach? So I thank you so much for agreeing to lease on an eighteen-month period, the parcels, so we can package them with the nineteen acres, to really do this, I think, the right way, transparent, and also all together. I think it also is a nice thing for the city council to now have influence over nineteen acres that you don't own, because that's sort of, excuse me, am I hearing, everything goes into this here, phones, doorbells, my mother calling probably, goes in there, so that's that. Now, so thank you for trusting us, trusting what our process will be, and so on, for the next eighteen months. Now, I hope it's sooner than eighteen months, but we also don't want to rush it, if something happens and we can get this master plan done sooner, or somebody comes in with interest we can all agree on, doesn't mean we have to wait eighteen months, but at least that gave us the chance to do good market research and so on. One of the things we've tried to always do is we use local wisdom, we have a lot of smart local people, you know, Andrew to be one of them next to me, but I've also found it's really valuable to bring in outside resources that have done this in other places. You know, if you're not aware of it, we've contracted with Gina Worth from SCAP to come in and do the phase two of the waterfront resiliency plan, and privately, that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, because we think that's so vital, and many of you might have been involved and seen what she's done in the past. So when we looked at who to bring in to help us with this, we're really sort of fortunate, because you can sort of just drive these people by having them come to CivicCon, and get to know them, get to see their work, and so on, and so with Jeff Speck, who's came in, I got really excited about what he's done. Of course, his books on walkability are much more than just walkability, how to create a thriving, financially solvent community, because one thing, two things Jeff said when he talked, which I think speaks volumes, is for a city to be successful, you have to attract and retain residents, and you have to create tax dollars, because if you can't create tax dollars, you can't provide the services, the infrastructure, the amenities to do that. You know, our county and our city is blessed, but we also have many, many non-for-profit buildings and companies that also don't pay the taxes, so we've got to figure out who does pay the taxes. It was pretty exciting, when you look at the property in South Town, we're going from seventy thousand dollars for the city in property tax to over seven hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax. The proposal we have at Garden Street will take nontaxable property right now, they pay no taxes, the school board will put three million dollars to the school district that can go to children, and create ten million dollars in property taxes over the next ten years, and bring more and more people downtown. So, let me read a little bit about Jeff Speck, and then he can go a little bit further, then I'll answer any questions. Jeff Speck is a city planner and urban designer who advocates more walkable cities, director in design of the National Endowment for Arts from two thousand three to two thousand seven. He presided over the Mayor's Institute of City Design and created the Governor's Institute of Community Design. Prior to his federal appointment, Mr. Speck spent ten years as director of town planning for DPZ and Company, a principal of firm behind New Urbanism Movement since two thousand seven. He has led Speck and Associates, a private design consultancy, served public officials in the real estate industry. With Anders Dornway and Elizabeth Platter Seebreak, Mr. Speck is a co-author of Suburban Nation. And Wall Street Journal called this the urbanist bible. His latest book, Walkable City, which is Christian Science Man who calls timely, important, delightful work, was bestselling city planning book to two thousand thirteen and sixteen. Unfortunately, is no longer the bestselling book, because his new book is now the bestselling book. And if you haven't seen his new book, it's really wonderful, because every two pages, it sort of gives a process, a way to do that. Of course, Mary Ann, you know from DPZ, Andrew you know quite well, so his TED Talks and YouTube videos have been viewed over three point five million times, and Cheryl, you're not there yet, but I want to thank you. Cheryl put the transitional meeting on her Facebook, and she's already got over seven hundred views of the transitional meeting, which is really quite wonderful. So, Carolyn Tahar, this is Jeff, and anyway, we'd like to, maybe like to say a few words, but then we really want to turn it over to you and the community, just to get feedback. The only caveat I want to say to people is, we want to hear every idea, but the one thing we've all got to do is make sure we do good market studies, so whatever we do can be financially supportable. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, Jeff, go ahead and introduce yourself. Hi, everyone, this is my first time in front of you all, and hello to the people behind me, my apologies as well.
Do you like his glasses, though?
Very modesty, I like. And I also wanted to introduce Marina Corey, who I guess a lot of you already know, and she's been before this body, before. Marina is from DPZ. My story as a student and someone who thought they wanted to be an architect, wasn't sure, was interested in design, was discovering DPZ really in the eighties, when I was still in college. And honestly, if you cared about design in the eighties, the nineties, the most happening place in the world for urban design was Florida, because of this firm that was working in the Panhandle and other places, Andres Swanee, Elizabeth Platter Seebreak. And I eventually got to work with them, and I spent from ninety-three to oh-three as director of town planning at DPZ, which is where I got to know Marina. I then went to the National Endowment for the Arts for four years, started my own firm in DC, which I've now moved to Boston, and it's now eleven years old. But I always like to team up with my old friends, and the appropriate firm when I'm working in a certain place, and certainly the appropriate firm to team up with, and I do it regularly, if you're working in this area, is DPZ. And when I heard that Marina, who, you know, I've worked with for decades, was already working in Pensacola, it seemed an appropriate partnership. So Quint asked me to come in, I asked Marina to come in.
She might have somebody to come to.
I met Quint because of CivicCon, I know some of you were at CivicCon, and I hope you were able to hear my talk. If not, I will direct you, I want to get more hits on those TED Talks, so I'll direct you to ted.com, where I have two different talks that really in a half an hour, because you know TED Talks only fifteen minutes, in half an hour, it spells out all the stuff that I talked about at CivicCon, which, you know, maybe I don't have to get into again. But I've been in Pensacola probably every twelve years, for the last, let's say, thirty-six years, and it's amazing, I didn't see much change between, say, twenty-four years ago and twelve years ago, but between twelve years ago and my most recent visit, it's really astounding what's been accomplished here. I know that Quint's had a lot to do with it, I know a lot of you have had a lot to do with it, but it's nice to see how, you know, people are people and ask, you know, have we turned the corner? Are we, I think I would say you're at the corner, and particularly the downtown, which of course is the part of the city that people think about when they think about Pensacola, they picture your downtown, it's now a real, it's a real draw, and I think it has the potential to be even more so. And much of the potential lies in this site. This site is ideal, it has, you know, incredible access to the water and the views, it's a five-minute, I mean, it's really, it's in downtown, but it's adjacent to the Palafox and the heart of downtown, it's big enough, and what we see here is, we can zoom out maybe a little bit, Andrew, but what we see here is, you know, what I consider the study area includes the twenty-nine acres to the north, you could put your, maybe the house on, can we put the house on?
Yeah, the nineteen.
The nine, sorry, nineteen acres to the north, but the study area, I think, comprises not only that, as well as the Maritime Park area, but also frankly, the building we're in, and the parking lot in front of it. When you're looking to make an area come to life, you have to draw the boundaries a little wider, and when we do, when we do planning studies, we don't just pick a parcel that happens to be owned by our client, we say, you know, what is the bigger picture, and how can we do a plan which addresses the kind of holistic neighborhood that we're going to create here? This is a large enough site, and a amazingly enough located site, to fundamentally change the nature of your downtown. And when I say you're at the corner, and maybe you haven't turned the corner yet, this is the kind of site that would get you around the corner. But one thing, the reason that I was reading about DPZ in the nineteen eighties, and the experience I got from doing forty projects at DPZ over a decade, we never did a single project that corresponded to the existing zoning on the site. Because the first thing, what made DPZ famous, world famous, is that they realized that it was possible, even though we hadn't done it for fifty years, it was possible to make new places that were as, that were traditionally organized in the way that we used to, around walking, and around mixed use, and not, you know, the subdivision of housing, and the mall, and the pod of offices, but to bring the traditional city back together, and it was possible to make places that people actually loved, as much as the old places that we cherish and that we go to on holiday when we are able to. But the second thing that Andres and Liz discovered, and they made very public, is that actually, it's legally impossible, almost everywhere in America, to do that, because the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinances and subdivision ordinances that most cities have, are imported from suburbia, they're auto-centric, you know, they're organized around the automobile, and they actually don't let you build the kind of places we love. And so every project I did at DPZ, and every project I've done since, has gone through some sort of PUD or other exception in the zoning code in order to be permitted, because the existing zoning does not allow beauty, does not allow urbanism and walkability. So that's one reason why we're here, because yes, there's the issue that a lot of this is city land, but there's a larger issue that we need support and endorsement and help from the city if we're going to do a design which has the quality that will cause it to benefit the city in the ways that it could. And so, you know, Quint, after CivicCon, Quint asked me if I would work with his team on this site, and he asked me for a scope of work to come up with a full plan. And I said, actually, I'm not sure if I want this job, because you're obviously the ideal client, right, and you guys, I think you know how lucky you are, but to have a major developer in your city, who's not really a developer, but someone who cares about your city so much, is not trying to make a quick buck, and who asked the question, you know, how can I make downtown Pensacola great? To have that as a client is an absolute dream, but for a plan to be successful, and to be beautiful, and to be desirable, it actually takes the whole community. There's one client is the developer, the other client is the city, government, and then the third client, which they represent, is the public. And so, before getting involved in a project, I like to know that actually the whole team is there, and you don't know so much about what we're proposing, because we don't know, you know, what we're proposing. But I'm, one of the reasons I'm taking this trip here is to get a sense of the appetite among the public and among the leadership for doing something really great on this site, truly, you know, truly game-changing. So that's the main message I want to share with you. The other thing we want to talk about is the process, and I'm going to hand it to Marina in a little bit to elaborate some, but the way, the other great invention of DPZ, besides traditional town planning, was actually the charrette process. And the charrette process, which did not exist before DPZ invented it, was this idea of designing in public, over a multi-day stretch, with the doors open, and really involving the public and the public officials at the ideation phase, right, at the conception phase. You know, the public, these days in planning, one way or another, the public will be involved, that's inevitable, but it's so much more helpful if actually the public helps you dream up the scheme, and helps you create the scheme. And so we, we are in the habit in our projects of designing very openly, very publicly, and over a stretch of a number of days where people are welcome to come in and participate, and that's the sort of process that we like to do with this site. But, you know, the term public-private partnership is very vague, and can mean what you want, and I'm not sure what it might mean in this sense, but we like to do projects that at least feel like they're jointly sponsored by the developer and the city. So it doesn't really matter who pays, although it's always nice to spread it around, but what matters is that when we do a, when we do our work, that there's a feeling that our client is everybody, and that the, there's a joint enthusiasm around the process. I think that's enough from me, but Marina, always.
Before you kind of run, Marina, let me just back up with some goals too, and thank you so much. By the way, Jeff has not agreed to take on this project, what he agreed to do is come here for today, because I, well, any good consultant, being in that business, you have to first of all, get to know and say, is this someplace I want to do? I don't know if you're aware of this, but Ray Kindros, urban design, had been here twice before I brought him in, the third time. When I called him up, he said, I'm not coming to Pensacola anymore. He said, I've been there twice, but nothing's done, and yeah, I make some money, but I don't want to be in a place where my stuff isn't used. Well, we've done a lot, not everything, but we've done a lot. Ray came back this summer, even though he was retired, because he wanted to feel good about seeing some of his stuff done. But even when he came in just to look at Maritime Park, we had him go all the way down to Villars, we had him look at it. So our proposal, as we do this, is to make sure we go wide, all the way down Main Street to different places, all the way up, because it all has to be connected. Let me go over some of the goals. When you agreed to allow us to be the master developer, create a vibrant destination that serves as a gateway to further west side, north side development, a connected walkable space, connected, adjacent to the properties where people live, work, play, and learn, public access to waterfront with amenities, including Bruce Beach, public portions of the Maritime. Inclusion and local, I do hope the city council adopts the covenant for the community, as the county has just done, which we have always followed privately, which means seventy percent of all labor dollars go to local people, makes a big difference and turns it around. With workforce concept, with local minority workforce goals to develop and construction, of course, always accessible, you know, we always want to make sure things are accessible for all sorts of people with special needs. And really, job creation and property tax revenue, you know, how can we continue to do things that help us be more financially sustainable? So Jeff?
Thanks. I just wanted to introduce Marina, who some of you have already met, but.
I don't have, I'm delighted to be here again, and I hope to see you all very soon. Again, I just wanted to just piggyback on a few things Jeff and Quint have said, which is, I know you realize, you've heard me say this before, you've got great bones here, tremendous potential, you've got great architecture, you've got visionaries here, you've got people committed to the community. We hope you will see with the, you know, if this project proceeds, the work that we're going to do will be distinguished in a couple of ways. The first one is, we really want an inclusive process, and they do have a timeline attached to what they're doing, so we were going to describe a public process, but hopefully with your help, you can help us figure this out, that's going to be more involved than what you're used to seeing, so there's a beginning and an end to it, of course, so there's going to be times at which we absolutely need your input. We're going to be encouraging everybody to come to our charrette, and as Jeff mentioned, you know, we really like to design in public, we don't just say it, you're going to hear, you've probably heard the word charrette thrown out, now charrette's come to me, you know, a one-hour workshop, that's not what we do. We, people come in, they have ideas, we draw them up, as opposed to arguing whether it's a good idea or not, we think we should draw it up and then let it stand on its merit or not. So we encourage the participation of the public, you're going to see that ideas you have are drawn up, and it's not to say that everybody's ideas are going to be accepted, but another thing that is, but it's going to, we're going to show you why it's a good idea or why it's not, because fundamentally, you all know the site much more than we do. The other thing I want to say is that we do want to, Jeff, as much as us, we pride ourselves on getting planned, and by the way, codes as well implemented, so it's really critical that it be grounded in a realistic sort of economic framework, and that's why we're holding off on doing anything until that part has been sort of resolved, so we have something to work towards, because it's really important to understand the potential of the site within the, the tremendous potential that it has, but there are also constraints to it as well, and given everything else that exists in Pensacola. So I'm looking forward to engaging, and we look forward to working with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Marina. So we'd just like to open it up to council's comments and questions in the most general sense. I can put a little bit of a frame around it, maybe Quint, you'd like to as well, saying, we're very curious about your feelings about process and how we move it forward. We're very curious, although there'll be ample time for this as we move forward, to hear your ideas for the site, and different things you'd like to see there, or that you know have potential there, or that you feel are appropriate. But I've been calling this my listening tour, and it's just the first step of hearing what's possible. Quint, if you want to elaborate on it.
Sure, I'll open it up as far as the indicator, if you wanted to speak, should I open up any council members who want to comment and questions as far as?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you, not everyone in the audience, and everyone who is looking on Facebook, it told me I needed to rotate the camera, I don't know how to do that, so if you all are, if you all are standing on your heads, trying to look at this, I apologize, but I have found that live streaming on Facebook is incredible. I do it for all my town hall meetings, we did it the other day for the transition team meeting, and it's been viewed almost seven hundred times in a very short period of time, and people were logging in, as, you know, I could see who was, you'd be surprised with some of the people who were watching while it was going on, but it was really great. So I want to go back, you mentioned a very significant time period. You said that you came here twelve years ago, and you saw some incredible changes.
Mostly between twelve years ago and now, is what I've noticed.
Well, let's talk about that twelve-year period, okay? Because it's significant, because I was just sitting here doing some little math, and twelve years ago, the citizens voted to proceed with the development of the Community Maritime Park. And we had created, the city didn't do it, a private corporation, nonprofit, the Community Maritime Park Board of Trustees. So the citizens voted to approve two documents that the council had already approved, and that was the master development agreement and the master lease agreement. And in those documents, it generally set out the vision of what that project would be like. And so, you know, the voters voted for it based on a concept of multi-use, walkability, access to the water, a marina, and so a lot, but a lot of things didn't happen that the public envisioned would happen, and there are a lot of reasons for that. I think one of the reasons it was difficult to develop is because of the layers of I think one of the reasons it was difficult to develop is because of the layers of what the bureaucracy are, that you had to go through to do anything. And I know that Quint, you would often have come to CNPA meetings and your representatives and it was so frustrating because you had the CNPA, you had the city council, you had the mayor and nobody knew, well, who makes decisions around here? And so, so it just was a hindrance to trying to get anything done. We now have a process where we have, do not have the CNPA and I want to thank, I was on the CNPA. I want to thank me, I want to thank Ann. And I want to thank, you know, really and truly, I went to more CNPA meetings than I ever want to remember, but I went to most of them. And so we're here now, we have a simpler process because we don't have all those different layers. We had 20 people who were potentially involved in making decisions. Well, now we just have the city council and the mayor's office and now we have a contract to help move forward with what was anticipated 12 years ago. It's taken us 12 years. So I am very excited about this process. And I'm also excited that we're going to include this property and this building and that parking lot in it. I think this is a great building. It is 33 years old and it has a lot of great characteristics to it. However, I think that we need to look at how it fits into the overall scheme of things because I believe it's underutilized. I believe that it could be better utilized. So that was one of the things that I had mentioned that I would like to see included. And it appears that you have agreed to do that, hopefully. So I want to thank you for that. So basically, I'm just, the only other thing I request is that we have got to have buy-in from the entire city of Pensacola. And that means that you have to have, I'm not telling you you have to, you don't work for me, but anyway, I just want to let you know, if you don't have charrettes and meetings in the north end of the city, you're not going to have the buy-in. And so for the best project and the buy-in, we're going to have to be very inclusive in terms of geographical inclusiveness.
And everything too, Sherry, not just the city of Pensacola, you know, many of our people that come downtown don't live in the city of Pensacola. I think it's Escampia County, I think it's Santa Rosa County. I think we really need to get all, because we want to attract those people down, maybe move into the city, but certainly to shop, to buy, to enjoy, to entertain. So yeah, I think certainly that all of this is not going to say you have to be a city resident.
That's right. And we, when you do your market analysis, we need to know, what is it that people want? What is it that will bring them here? And like you said, you know, it's a much broader market than just, you know, the city of Pensacola.
Well, truly the Nathan, right? I know Robert Rentez here is the fact that, you know, for years that visit, or visit Pensacola would push, come to our beaches. And what Robert has told me now, when they advertise, they have an advantage because it's not only come to our beaches, but you also can come to a lot of other things. So Jack Federer would be really happy because that was one of his, his goals is to get people to come to the Neighborhood Museum and some other things.
Well, and when my daughter comes to visit here, I tell her, why don't you stay downtown? Or, you know, and go to the beach during the day because really and truly, when the sun goes down, you're going to be over here because there's a lot to do here. So I agree with John there.
And I appreciate all the work that the people on the beach have done in the development here. Andy, I'm sorry.
Make sure it's handled well and then I'll do it.
Yes, I have, thank you. I'm really excited about moving forward. I've been on the council for a long, long time and, you know, the expectation is that actually things are going to get done. We've done a lot since I've been on the council, started in 2004. Had a hiatus for two years, but we've done a lot. I was a part of some of the Gindros studies that we had done and so was a part of those. One of the questions that I have is the previous studies that we've had, we had the Gindros study, we also have the CRA plan, we've also had, I think it was the URAK plan. We have all of these plans and I just want to make sure that in going through a process that we can also look at some of those ideas and that particular input that we had there. The next part is, of course, the public meetings and council member managers mentioned, one of the things that was important is to make sure that we have meetings across the city as well as, you know, in those other areas that are identified by the market study because sometimes people feel they're not, they're not going to, you know, be a part of it. And many times those people have great ideas and so we want to make sure that we include that. Another thing that was mentioned is the code review. So I'm looking at process and so before this process can move forward, is there going to be an analysis of our city codes, land development codes, all of those things that could substantiate any change? Or is it we're going to get public input on, from the public and from us as to what people desire to be on there? So I want to make sure at what point that's going to happen because that can dictate, you know, a couple of things for us. The market study, sometimes the market study, you know, costs a lot. And so at what point will the city and our partners come together to say, this is determining the scope of work and what that cost is going to be so that we can move things forward within our 18-month time period? So that's a couple of questions that I have.
So I'll comment first, others are welcome too. In our standard contracts that we write to do this kind of work, the first item is always to study all the previous plans because there's always great ideas. Often we've done the previous plans and then the economy team, a lot of us did 2007 previous plans in communities that didn't happen because of 2007. But that's great work just to learn from those. Those previous plans, of course, need to be updated based on the new market realities and the new market study and the fact that some of them didn't have market studies. So there are aspects that aren't realistic, but we're very, very curious to, and we've seen a bit of them, but we're very curious to get to know that better. I love the idea that you both shared with meetings in the north side and elsewhere in the city and elsewhere in the region, I think would be fantastic. I don't think it's going to be our scope of work to rewrite your whole city code to make our project possible, but I do believe that once we have a proposal, that would be the time to then ask the question, what aspects of the existing codes get in the way of that proposal being possible? And then it's probably a much more expeditious path to try to find a way around those specific issues rather than redoing your entire code mechanism, which Marina who did it for Miami can tell you it can be a five-year and $5 million process, at least it wasn't Miami. But those are my quick responses. If anyone else wanted to comment.
I just want to make sure I clarify, I don't want you to redo the whole code.
Yeah, good.
But one of the things that in our previous experience with DMC, when they talk about change, they also talk right at the same time about what the code restricted you to and what the code would allow you to do. And so that, that's the type of thing that I'm looking for.
You know, Jewel, since I've gotten some civic content, I'm so much more knowledgeable than I did like before and I follow a lot of these websites and reality is, a lot of the things today don't exist. So for example, if you're going to create walkable streets, you need to narrow. Sometimes cities' codes demand that a road be wider than it need to be. You need to be able to put like the Woolner, you know, where you slow down a track to put trees in. And there are some places where they don't want the trees and, yeah, trees are great. So I agree with you. I think as we go through this, we may have some great opportunities to look at, at things and look at changes that need to be made because you go to a narrow road, go to different things to bring in that density sometimes.
And finally, will the timeline, you're going to have a timeline and we got timeline in place, for example, the beginning of the market study, council approving the market study and then so forth all the way until we can get to where we need to be on improving the project.
Absolutely. Some of the efforts will overlap just because of our limited amount of time. There's no reason to delay our investigation to the site and the previous plans, et cetera, while that kind of work is being done. In terms of the city's role in sponsoring or participating in those market studies, I'm not sure what's being announced.
I plan on asking you for mine because I find that slows it down personally. But if we do a market study, I would say that we'll probably privately fund that, but we want you to be involved in who it is, what, there's no secrets here. And if you'd like to pay, we'll.
Of course, you know, the city always loves our partnerships, but whatever those responsibilities are, you know.
We have to build that in.
For me personally, I'm willing, you know, to share, to support and everything.
I agree.
So whatever those responsibilities are, we just wanted to know upfront and how we could be involved in it.
I think the participation, although it's always nice to have the city pay because then the city feels an ownership of the outcome for the plans, but I think the real opportunities and perhaps, you know, the asks, the asks around city investment will be less to do with the plans and more to do with the actual development of the settlement. You know, for example, if we're replacing your parking lot here with denser development and creating a consolidated parking solution that serves the whole neighborhood, you know, there's going to be a cost to that and often cities participate in that sort of investment.
But when we met with Rover last night, we think there are great ways to do these things. Sort of like what you did in South Town, I thought that was a really effective way to put a parking garage in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think Maritime Park is an excellent place to do a private-public agreement because we own the property. The voters have mandated that it be developed and they put amazing commitment financially into buying the property, fixing up the infrastructure, cleaning up the land. And then we also have a commitment to the public access. We've added the breakwater. We have a permit for the marina. We have a design for the marina and it's coming at a time that's really exciting with the clearing of Bruce Beach because now we see that whole vision there. We know there are a lot of kayakers, you know, before we were thinking of small public marina for boats, you know, medium, not necessarily yachts and canoes. But now, you know, maybe we can make ourselves a kayak capital right there. So it's really exciting and I think we do need to have that vision that now that we can see the waterfront, because a lot of times it was blocked off, we want it and we want to have access to it and we want it to be a continuum, you know, from, let's say, the bridge on down. And that's what I hope you will put into it. We know we have to pay for these things and that's where I believe Mr. Suter's right there, you know, helping us figure out to make it sustainable. But that public access has to be there and I think Rebecca Ferguson has worked with grants and cleaning up the underwater parts and making things happen from, you know, the park position.
Thank you.
So we're here. I just, one of my questions is, whatever the priority or the factor part of this is completely seaweed property or maritime farm, which one's going to be, is there a different base of view or is this all going to work together?
Well, I think Jeff will, I think first of all, we do the market study and see what the market's bearing. But I've seen this, I think what we've tried to do is we don't see this as one or the other. We see it as a combined piece of property that should be developed and developed in the best way possible. And, you know, the market might say, hey, this is where the market wants to be first, this is second, but we also want everyone to know what's going to come next because, you know, we have developers in the back of the room and they're worried, if I put a lot of money in here, what else is going to go on? You know, Dee Dee Davis is here, we talked to her yesterday and, you know, she had somebody that might be interested in a parcel, but then they want to know what else has come. So Jeff, you want to take a shot?
I mean, a proper plan doesn't, a proper plan doesn't really, it needs to be aware of who owns what, but a proper plan does not concern itself particularly with who owns what. And we'll be looking at properties, I mean, included, because a property is included in the plan doesn't mean a plant, a property will change, right? It doesn't mean the building's going to be torn down. You know, we were in a bar last night that union, that I don't want to see torn down, right? But we want to plan around it and because that's right there. So the plan needs to embrace surrounding parcels, even a bunch that are, are and will remain privately owned and privately controlled. But a proper plan looks at the whole area holistically as a complete supportive mechanism because if we design it right, people will be walking on all over the area from one end to the other and we want to give them a great experience, which is what makes it a valuable neighborhood. So, you know, I would draw the boundaries of the study area beyond either of these properties to include the surrounding neighborhood.
The next question is about the density in the area. Only as you go to larger cities, that's more of a density. Are we looking to increase that within these areas?
So irrespective of the existing zoning, I think we share a goal for this property to bring a lot of bodies downtown and diverse, right? We want a lot of people living there and I think they're going to, they're going to, there's going to be all different types of housing. I would say we have to listen to a market study and see what's feasible, but my goal would be, you know, the more, the more the better.
And my last question is, normally when you get a project going, it's kind of hard to break it to the close, maybe a project going to, when it gets down to the end. You have people that object to it and we never break it to the close, even though this mayor spent a year or two working, doing this charrette, all the work, you know, when it gets down to the end, the project will go forward. It's not a good solution.
I would say that's more our concern than yours. We're very concerned.
Well, I think what we've done, pure private, well, we've had a pretty good track record for it. We've also struggled when we've tried to do public-private partnerships too. So the reason we're doing this right now, this way, try to learn from the past and get it right up front. And anything, you know, there's going to be 25 to 33% of people that are going to be against whatever we come up with according to research. I mean, I've done research on this and it is just going to, going to happen. And that's why I think at times you have to have strong legs. I would say there's probably not a baseball game that doesn't go by that somebody doesn't come up and apologize for saying, you know, I was against this, I didn't think it would work, I've said some mean things about you over the years, you know, I'm sorry. So I think we all have to have strong legs when we go into these things and, you know, it's been really neat talking to Mayor Hayward, who as you know, had had a change in the Bruce Beach situation, but I think the outcome he's very excited with, even though it was a painful way to get there and he's very supportive of it. So, you know, it's a process we go through and I hope the city council and us has strong legs, but there will be 33% of the people probably that won't like whatever we come up with.
Yeah, I would just say the charrette process that we've refined over the years is, was created for the purpose of doing the best that you can in the public sphere to finish projects in a reasonable amount of time so that you wrap in people's concerns early on in the design phase and they're much less likely to show up and become a wrench in the works subsequent. But there will be opposition, there always is, and that's one of the reasons why we need the support of city council that, you know, if we, if we run a project that is truly listening to what people want and embracing of what's possible and, you know, for and of the community, that then there's an understanding that that is something that should be supported.
No, I think your own, once it's done, the people against it starts going down, once they see it working, once they understand. Sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, it's like wallpaper, if I picked out wallpaper, it'd be a disaster, you know, and I don't understand how it works. Now, once it's up there, I say, oh, now I get it. And this just takes a while sometimes. Some people can visualize it sooner, some people, when it's done, they, I mean, how many people thought, my God, you don't want to put a ballpark there? And then they wanted it covered up and then when we went to build our office building, then they did want it covered up. So. covered up, so, so sort of changes here. Jared?
Anybody else, Jared, any questions, comments?
Because you're on the planning board, right?
Well, I was, I recently designed a renewed post.
I think it really comes into play on something in this project, your experience on that board.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and to me is also encouraging to see Marina involved right from the beginning, kind of anticipating how those uses and how everything can sell in there. I think that's very smart. I, I am extremely encouraged, it sounds like, kind of, it's universal that we're all disappointed to be at this point, and there not be, the development's not complete, right? There's been a lot of great talk, a lot of potential, we all recognize the potential of these parcels, but I think it's very deciding to see, hey, we're strategically... What is the deal? Why don't we get this quiet microphone? All right. So, yeah, yeah, just the potential of this property and see that we're strategically addressing it. When Andrew was petitioning for this arrangement at City Hall a few months ago before the existing council then, he talked about it being very open, so it was surprising to me and encouraging that right here after the gig, it's, there's public inclusion, I think that's, that's encouraging, exciting. To be sure, like you said, to get it right, we don't get nine months down the road and have some protesters coming out of nowhere to derail it. And then also just the high quality of consulting that you brought in, because they're both very encouraging pieces, so I'm excited to see what helps it. You with us, Bill?
Yes, regarding the zoning, as I recall, at one point, the Maritime Park was not part of the government district zoning, it had its own separate zoning. I don't think that was ever changed, it was an effort to combine it, but I don't think that passed. Is there anybody here that can give us an update on what the zoning of the park is?
It's waterfront.
Why, really?
It's called waterfront, yeah.
So that may give you a little bit more latitude than the other places.
I think the challenge will be, you'll see why.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah. Well, I started going to the maritime park meetings, the very first one, I rarely missed one for, I guess, what, 10 years or so, and I started going there when I worked for the Center for Independent Living Disability Resource Center for one reason, to represent the interest of people with disabilities, to make sure that that project, whatever was built there, was accessible for all abilities. So I will tell you, going out the gate here, that I will continue to advocate that any project that we build be accessible for all abilities, including people my age which have limited sight issues when it comes to lighting, when it comes to the condition of sidewalks. I know the new urbanism, and I do support walkability. I grew up in a family that never owned a car, and I'm a great walker, I still walk to this day, all the time. So, but I have done extensive surveys of the sidewalks in this whole downtown area. I would love for you to take a walk with me. It will be a walk like you've never experienced. And so we have got to fix this issue down here, and so I want it to be very walkable. I want it to be usable by people like me. I have a disability, it's called visual. I also have severe osteoporosis, I cannot afford to fall down. And in Escambia County, we have a huge population of people over the age of 60. If you look at our demographics, Escambia County, about 17% of the people are over the age of 60. You compare that to Leon County, it's about 8%, 8%, that was shocking to me when I look at the demographics of older people here. So I am very much in favor of having a parking garage, and I'm also an environmentalist, I love parking garages, because I think they can be so exciting, they can be more than just brick and mortar and ugly. They can be aesthetic, they can, if we wanted to, we could generate solar power there and fuel up electric cars and electric bicycles, and I want a parking garage that is futuristic, that will be futuristic 50 years from now. So, anyway, that's just kind of on my mandatory list and also my wish list. I just want to throw that out there.
Are we going to have time for Republican?
Just, just, I was just going to make one comment, and I guess, it seems like the next step is the, is the market study. What's the timeframe for that? To be done? Well, it depends, you know, there's usually a bit of a queue to get in the line, but that could be just a few, maybe start in, in two months and finish within a couple more months.
Yeah, so four, five, say five months.
Yeah.
And if that...
You're doing stuff to round out some of that later.
Yeah, but at that point, I guess, we talked about having public meetings and whatnot.
The design process itself is usually about a six-month process, six or seven months, once, you know, the, the actual production of our, of our product.
But the, but the design portion will, will come?
That should wait until the market studies are, are at least able to give us preliminary indications.
Because I'd like to see another, another council workshop once the market study's done, to present it.
Oh, absolutely.
And then, and then another one.
The, the thing that, the thing I'll warn you about with the Shiret is that this isn't the typical process of checking in with you every two months for years and years. We really try to compress it, and people say, what, I need to come to three meetings in one week, or actually, I can show up every day for a whole week, I've, I'll come once. I mean, that's like a year's worth of meetings. To compress the, the feedback loops and the whole design cycle into that visit, which we do on-site, you know, in your view, so the, I, I will, I'll warn you that you might not see us for a little while, but then there'll be a very intensive interface.
Okay. Any more comments, questions, now, or? Okay, now I'll open up to Republicans, but anybody have any, yes, sir, please come on up and state your name, of course.
My name is John Nixon, I'm one of the older new guys here, and I just wanted to congratulate everybody in the last race, a couple weeks ago. Quinn, I think, I mean, you're a godsend, and I think everybody I know understands that, the significance of what your contribution is. I like to look at this in a little bit different, like, I'm hearing words like duty and enjoyment and sustainability and things like that. What comes to my mind is, what do we call this area of Maritime Park, the parcels? Does it, does it have a name? Do we call it, is it part of the park, Maritime Park?
I asked that yesterday, I think part of the fun of doing these projects is coming up from the need. We'll need something as a working title.
I think in general terms, it's, it's considered part of the Maritime Park facility. My belief is that Pensacola is a very special place, and when you look at what a special place is on a global scale, heritage city comes to mind, and when you look at the definition of a heritage city, Pensacola to me, anybody, is meets those qualifications. If we truly want to be special, I think those are the types of developments that we want to consider in our overall growth. And every heritage city that I was able to look at, and I understand we're still on the beginning stages of research and understanding of our true potential, they all have a park, and we have an area here that, and it's an inner-city rural, I mean, urban park in the center of the city. I just want us to, I just want to float that idea that maybe we consider the possibility of, of creating something truly special that would meet the qualifications of a heritage location, which we all know we have here, and look at the opportunities at an urban park in my brains. So let's, thank you for that, and you stay.
Thank you. Yes, that's, that's all.
John Nixon, I just wanted to mention that one of the parcels originally was dedicated for a maritime museum. I guess it was UWF was going to do it and was unable to complete that project, but as far as I know, the idea of a museum or a heritage place has not been taken off the table, so you might want to keep that going.
Okay, sounds good, and the financial sustainability, I understand that's a real reality, that we have to somehow balance, so, thank you, thanks again.
Thank you.
Good morning, Gloria, morning, Vice President of Ten Year Neighborhood Association, and we have several concerns because we're getting pushed out left and right, 50 pounds of mud and a 30-pound sack over there, and when there's a game or any event at Ballpark, which we enjoy, there's no parking in front of our own homes, because nobody wants to pay 5, 10, 15, 20 dollars. So there's that issue. And the other issue Keith knows, I think Government Street has been closed for about two years now, because whatever ECUA's doing, don't know, but it smells and it stinks. And there's your other issue. What ECUA doesn't tell you is that water at Bruce Beach is highly contaminal. Most recently, we had 44,000 gallons of raw sewage going. So they better send an environmental test on Bruce Beach. And nobody thought harder than I did, longer than I did, to keep Bruce Beach, Blue Beach. The other part that we do have to talk about is heritage. The African-American community of the tannery needs to be recognized, John Sunday needs to be recognized, all the others that have put forth long before everybody wanted to move to this side of town. We were the forgotten child, and we still are. If you look at our sidewalks, our streets are a mess. Go out there right now, I can't even get to my house, because the road, and it's right behind the Union House, and I have a feeling that y'all probably come after my house before long, but I can give it up. So I can live in 702 square feet, and that's what I'm living in. So we've got to make homes affordable, those homes that are now in the tannery are started at 285 and up, that is not affordable housing for the community that lives there. And I just came back from Reno, and they're having the same issues with flooding in Nevada, flooding. You know where the flooding is coming from? Sewer, just like it is here, sewer, it's infrastructure. And until that is suppressed, especially in the tannery, you're not going to get anywhere except for a bag of you-know-what. And come stay, you know, I'll move out, I can go stay with friends, come stay at my house for a week and see what you hear. I've got a pump running across the street from me now for 24/7, because there's no consideration for the people in the tannery, none when the construction comes in. There isn't even a safety fence around this hole, and I don't, I can't tell you how many cars I stopped going in that hole last night, and I'm talking a big hole. So quit squeezing us tannery residents out, we like our community, we like, you know, we've liked it long before y'all even knew it was there, other than when Old Stinky was there, and now you're pushing us out. A lot of us aren't going to be pushed, but the other environmental issue is the storm, I mean, the sewer, raw sewage that is constantly going into Bruce Beach, y'all need to check it out. It's on the Florida Department Environmental Protection Site at Osceola Day. Of course, ECUA doesn't, but y'all need to check it out, it's poisonous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Robert Reiki, I've had a real estate business in Pensacola for 25 years, and I'm here this morning just to commend everybody that's been involved with downtown all these years. Such an iconic, involved with Pensacola. For 15 years of our real estate business, we really just focused on Pensacola Beach. And about 10, 12 years ago, we started working on the rest of the real estate business. With what you guys have accomplished downtown Pensacola for the last, especially five, seven, eight years, we have a small group of realtors, about 80, that do about $400 million of business. We focus on selling the lifestyle, and it's not just the lifestyle of the beach anymore. We pretty much start off with selling the lifestyle of downtown Pensacola. We're lucky to have the beach, we're, I caught me and Ask, two years in a row, number one beach in America, unbelievable. Downtown, Palafok Street, number one, one of the top 10 streets in America. So all of our realtors, with every home we sell, we sell $100 million on Pensacola Beach a year, and we sell $300 million off of Pensacola Beach a year. Every home we sell, we train our realtors to talk about every piece of lifestyle, what do you do when you're not at work, and that, what you've done downtown, and I commend everything about it. Your landscaping is incredible, Christmas lights, the way you maintain the historic value of downtown. I commend Andrew and Quinn, what they do downtown, tremendous piece, but it's taken the city council, the downtown improvement board, the mayor, incredible developers, it's taken everybody working together to accomplish this. So just wanted you to know the power that you guys have for the entire, you know, for the quality of life, and how that shows up as well is, you know, we had probably 50 kids, 100 kids in and out of our home when our kids grew up. We were lucky to live on the beach, everybody wanted to be there, so we had a home filled with kids. 10 years ago, most of these kids did not want to come back to Pensacola. Today, they are kicking, screaming, scratching, trying to figure out how, because of the quality of life Pensacola offers. So awesome job, everybody on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Texard, I live in East Hill, and I think we are the most, well, city in the world. We can be busy every night of the week if we want to be, and it's wonderful, but when we consider about this new project, I want to make sure that we still consider using the, the advantage we have of, of the University of West Florida and Pensacola State College. They have opportunities of, of bringing computer studies downtown, archaeology, we already have archaeology downtown, which is wonderful, and so keep that in mind when you're doing the planning stage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jerry Holzwerth, and Jeff, I would like to say thank you very much for coming, Marina, thank you for coming back. Jeff, I really hope that you decide to come back. It's really great to have this kind of person come to Pensacola and be willing to work with us. I hope we welcome him with open arms. Quinn, thank you for your generosity, for putting all this time and effort and money together for this Pensacola project. To the city council, I would like to say that should you decide to go with this plan, I would like you to think of one word from the very beginning, and that's implementation, because we all know we've got lots of studies here in Pensacola, nothing's ever happened like Councilman Wingate talked about earlier. So should you decide to go with this, let's think about pulling the trigger on this. One reason being, Lynn and I got involved with the whole Bruce Beach project was because of that sign that sat there on Main Street for three years, talking about marine hatchery. What happened to it? Why did that never happen? Everybody on the council said, what a great idea, let's do it, and then let it drop. So, and I'm glad, of course, that it did drop, and I think the citizens of Pensacola will eventually realize that Bruce Beach has a great potential, but I'm tired of seeing great projects decided and nothing ever happens, so please think in terms of that, and I hope you take this opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council, and yes, at the front table, I think I've spoken with all of you individually and collectively at different times. I'm Donnie Dufuson, 13,800, I also have a studio for the Mermaid Society at 420 North Avenue Street. I'm very excited that Mr. Stewart has stepped up and taken ownership of the planning, because we played football with various planners that no one could get trusted. We all trust Mr. Stewart to do what he says he's going to do, even when it costs him on the bottom line. We all trust Andrew, even when he doesn't understand why we're arguing or if there've been moments to get to an actionable place. I've heard... Um, I've heard Jeff as a speaker, and I've worked, um, with the recent sixteen meetings that we had to do an overlay of the Lower Yount Town, um, trying to do historical preservation and residential insurance. My reason for speaking today is to say that we do need this type of approach where we go all on the same page at the same time so that our discussions can be decided in a logical, sequential order, so that we don't have to keep readdressing. I think one of the things that happened with the CNPA was we had fifteen committees that kept changing membership, that kept changing focus. And even when decisions were made, it had to go back to two other bodies who overrode those decisions. So there was a growing sense of impotence, for lack of another word, with the people who were actually making the bottom-line plans. So I think we really need to encourage citizens to get involved now. And if they don't want tiny penny windows on a building, say so the first time you hear. Don't wait until we get to fifteen times later. And at the same time, if those doing the planning will hear when we say fifteen times, not all of our buildings have tiny paves, then don't let that be what's put into the plan. Because what we end up doing is nitpicking on those key heart throbs that we, the citizens, have. Uh, the Devilliers area has certainly gotten a bounce from what's happened downtown, but I think it would have happened anyway because of the need for residential, um, activity. We need the kind of commercial activity that will kick up into the neighborhood. And something like this really impresses me that we will finally get that balance along North Devilliers that was promised when we bought it at Maritime Park. So thank you all for putting your time into it. And while some of you will say I throw a wrench in it, you know, I really try not to. I try and throw the wrench in first, and.
Ryan Helm, seventeen oh four East Marino Street, District Five. Uh, first, I do want to say, well, welcome to our guest. And, um, Quinn, I thank you for your continuing leadership with excellence. Um, I just would remind council and, uh, Quinn, you as well, as chair of the transition team, to please be mindful of my comments about the importance and the significance of every resident in our city. The voiceless, the forgotten, and those who have similarly not had full representation uh, when it comes to what is coming next for them and how we can best serve them. Um, probably like many people in this room, I feel like I'm on the trampoline for the first time this morning. I'm very, very excited. But so does it feel like that on many city projects where it's hard to get spoken about. We get tuckered out and tired and then we get thrown off the trampoline. Please, don't let that happen. Uh, thank you for committing to this process early. I trust you to be strong throughout the process. Uh, I thank you for the significance of public input in the very beginning. And then finally, I'll say, um, the importance of moving forward. You know, as a business owner, uh, this past year, every single new employee I had and that I hired with pleasure and with qualifications was under twenty-five years of age. It's very exciting to me. And two of those people didn't live in Pensacola before they came here. So we're doing a lot right and there's things that we can do much better and I think this is a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alistair McKenzie. Some of you I know, um, some of you I don't know. Um, I am excited. I guess that's the best word I could use to see such positive interactions with what Quinn and his team are proposing and the generosity he's shown this community by offering to put such a plan forward. And the positivity that I'm seeing from all of the council members and all of their comments today. Um, I have had the good fortune of having a friend having invited me to one of the early Civicons and it was an eye-opening experience, to say the least. All of the kind of issues that have been going on the last little while in Pensacola about public complaint about not being noticed and things like that. If, if they would go to things like Civiccon and come to these meetings, they, they would see what all of this is about. And one point that's been raised a couple of times is kind of the equity issue and the gentrification issue that nobody's said the word outright. And if you go to Civiccon, you hear these new urbanist planners and speakers talk about it. Like, one of the fundamental tenets of it is equity and is trying to design ways of doing things that prevent against gentrification and that provide for affordable housing. And I'm, I anticipate that when plans are unveiled, that you will hear exactly those kinds of things. And a lot of those concerns can be late. And those are good and right concerns to have. And I speak to you as that as not only a, a social justice, civil rights attorney here in Pensacola, but it's also as a young entrepreneur in Pensacola. Um, uh, nothing against the age range that's been up here to speak at all yet, but the driving force behind the future of Pensacola is people that are ranging from twenty-five to probably forty-five. They are going to be the people that you want to be opening businesses here and moving to Pensacola, starting their families off, going to school here and helping to develop this city. And if you look at any of the research about millennials or my generation, which is just the custom millennials, there's a lot of things that we want. What do we want? Well, what do we want falls in line a lot with new urbanism. We want walkable cities. We don't really want to own cars. We want to engage with the community. We want to, you know, walk around. We want to ride our bikes around. And we just still can't do that in Pensacola. I live just across Sarandy Street on Strong Street, right by the Publix. Um, I can't comfortably get on my bicycle and ride downtown from where I live because Sarandy Street, people are just driving sixty-five miles an hour along. Um, I can't feel comfortable having my kids cross that street under any circumstances. Um, you know, and these are the kinds of issues that we need to start solving. And I think that will come into play with some of this master plan is talking about proposals that need to take place to change the city as a whole, to make it the kind of inviting place that we want. So we've got walkable and bikeable. Well, another concern of my generation and millennials, and again, go look at all the research, it's not just me talking about this. We care about sustainability and the environment. And when you increase urban density, when you increase walkability and bikeability, you kind of future-proof, you know, a lot of the environmental concerns. And you also future-proof buildings for those concerns. You also future-proof against economic downturns by placing everyone in a denser environment where they can get to and from the essentials that they need. And when they're closer to those businesses, those businesses have a less chance of failing because those people are there and live and depend on those businesses there. So even in the event of a future recession coming up, those businesses won't suffer as much as if they were part of sprawl and disconnected from everything. Um, another thing we like is a livable city. Pensacola has still got some of this sprawl kind of issue going on. And livable to us is having the local businesses that we can support. I mean, it's great that we have SD engineering coming in, but what's more important is the development of local entrepreneurs and local businesses because those form the bulk of the economy of the United States. Those are the businesses that the dollars come here and they stay here and they circulate throughout the economy here and they protect the economy here. It's kind of bomb-proofing Pensacola. It's just an added benefit that the city gets more beautiful, people are happier all along the way. And these are the kinds of things that my generation wants to see. And I cannot tell you how excited I am to finally see some of the bureaucracy removed from the situation and a lot of the council members. In fact, I didn't hear one negative comment today. All of the council members excited about pushing this forward. And I just urge you guys to please go forward with this. Do not stop. Because the future of Pensacola, the future of Pensacola's growth depends on this occurring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, how are y'all doing? I'm Dan Bowen. I'm the Vice President of the Sanders Beach Committee. So I would like to thank Quinn for all the Civiccon meetings. I've missed one in the past years. It's very, been very unlikely. And I can't wait. Well, a lot of people don't know Sanders Beach is just a little over a mile from downtown. So I'm sure glad to see development coming westward and really look forward to working with all and making, blending our community, hopefully in the near future also. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rand Hicks. And we, the people sitting in the back, would love to see the council enthusiastically endorse this possibility. I want to enthusiastically endorse what Sam and Alistair just said. And having said that, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
You know, I, I do want to say to the, the people in the public, the city council's already made a huge commitment to this when they agreed to the eighteen-month agreement. And they voted positively, I think almost, I think it was unanimous before that. And I thank the council, um, for that. So, thank you.
I appreciate it and, uh, I look forward to another, uh, meeting of, of this council and y'all's group. Um, I see this moving forward and I, I look forward to y'all's market study and, 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 sure, you're all polite on getting with you and maybe set something up for later so we can talk about maybe setting up another.
Sure, let's treat Jeff nice because he hasn't committed yet.
Could I?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to. Kind of in that same vein, uh, Mr. Stewart hasn't committed. I mean, everyone likes a good redemption story. I think it was you that stuck us. We're not overly bitter. We stuck us with that Pensacola parking syndrome moniker. So I would love for, now, twelve years later, for you to come back and have some new monitors. So we can open up to that one, so.
Just make your decision.
Reboot on that one.
Yeah, yeah. As you make your decision, let that little guilt prod you, uh.
Okay, uh, no more calls from council.
Thank you to all the community members that are here. Um, you know, Andrew and my emails are pretty obvious. If you, my quinticointsspeeder.com, my cell phone number is eight five oh two three two four six four eight. People say, why do you give your number? I said, I could give it out to three hundred thousand fans every year in the ballpark. So, um, you know, we're very approachable, want to work with you and, um, there's, there's no secrets here. Totally transparent.
Thank you. And now we're here.
So that ends our Facebook live streaming and signing off.